I don't see all of us. I don't see Bob. Where's Bob? I don't see all of us. I don't see Bob.
Okay.
Participants?
Well, John, I see in the upper right.
Where's Bob?
On my screen says live on YouTube.
Oh, wait. Hello?
I don't see all of us. I don't see Bob.
Hey, listen, it's okay. We're gonna make it work. So please, just relax.
Okay.
Live on YouTube.
Oh, wait.
Hey, listen, it's okay. We're gonna make it work. Just relax.
Okay.
Live on YouTube.
Oh, wait.
Hey, listen, it's okay. We're gonna make it work. Just relax. Live on YouTube. Bob, we can hear you. We don't see you yet.
Okay, got it.
Hello, Bob.
Hi, how are Mike? Hey, John?
Yes, Bob, we're live streaming now. We are now live streaming.
The reason I didn't get this notice is because the email address is wrong. Need notice. Hi, how are Mike? Hey, John?
Yes, thank you, Bob. We can talk about that. We're live streaming now. We are now live streaming.
The reason I didn't get this notice is because the email address is wrong. Need notice. Hi, how are Mike? Hey, John?
Yes, thank you, Bob. We can talk about that. We can begin the meeting now. We're live streaming.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to Belleport Village's first attempt at live screening, uh, live streaming our meetings to the residents. And we hope that over time, um, everyone will be able to, um, get, go on YouTube and, um, listen to our meeting, um, in person in your living room. So I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Uh, John, could you do a call?
Yes, Mayor Fell. Trustee Rosenberg.
Here.
Trustee Farigno.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Joe Gagliano.
Here.
Mr. Mackin.
Sure, here.
Thank you. Mayor Fell.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, would like to, uh, have a motion for the board to approve the minutes of the trustee meeting on March 23rd, 2020, Exhibit One, motion?
Motion.
Mike Farigno, second. Steve Mackin, uh, all in favor, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, report of the trustees, um, you want to, uh, Mike, would you like to start?
No, second. John can say whatever.
Okay, Steve?
I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay, uh, Bob Rosenberg?
Yeah, I, I would just like to make one thing. The village, the residents should understand that every decision we have made, uh, in connection with distancing and the body is pursuant to the governor's recommendations. Uh, we have not questioned or overlooked them.
Bob? Anyone else having audio problems?
Uh, yeah, we're all hearing it, David.
I'm having a tough time hearing. I hear a lot of echo and after I finish speaking, I just heard buzzing. And now I'm hearing myself echoing.
Bob, you might have another audio source that's causing the echo.
I, I might have one. I'm sorry, Steve.
You might have a secondary audio source in the background. You have a Bluetooth speaker or something?
Uh, hmm, I don't think so. Am I, I'm the only one with an echo?
It's gone now.
Okay.
Carry on.
Bob, you want to go over your, uh, comments again?
Oh, sure. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if I wasn't, uh, heard. All I wanted to say is that, you know, I'm reading a lot of commentary. I'm a critical and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands, uh, that every decision we have made, and I assume will make, respecting distancing and what's open and what's closed, has been pursuant to the governor's recommendations. None of it has been second guessed by us.
Right, they're not even the governor's recommendations, Bob. They're the governor's executive orders.
Okay, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we get those, uh, we get those orders every day. Mary Lou has been, uh, tremendous when, uh, as far as working with the contractors and, um, uh, the lawn maintenance people and, um, the pool, uh, paint maintenance and pool, uh, maintenance people. Um, anytime we get something, she gets right on the phone to them and lets them know exactly what it is that, um, they are responsible and not responsible for doing. Uh, the contractors have been very, very, um, um, supportive of, of the governor's recommend, uh, the governor's executive orders and, uh, we have, uh, told them what they are and, uh, they have, uh, been following, uh, Mary Lou's, uh, um, orders, uh, precisely and everything's, uh, been going very well, uh, as far as that, that is concerned. Uh, one of the things that, uh, they're having a little bit of trouble with is ice cream vendors in these, uh, carts going up and down the roads. I don't know if it's as much in Belleport as it is around Brookhaven Town and Islip Town and the other townships, but, um, they are not permitted to go, uh, up and down the streets and sell ice cream. So if you, if residents, if you see them in Belleport Village going up and down the streets, if you would call Village Office, we will call, um, the county and the county will contact the company and, um, uh, let them know that, um, someone in their, uh, organization is, uh, not following the executive orders. Uh, but at this point, we're, we're in pretty good shape. Um, the, the marinas have been open and, uh, we've sent, um, all the information, uh, about opening the marinas to our, uh, boat, uh, our, um, slip holders and, uh, our, of course, in April, our marina is never open for slip holders, but, uh, um, where our, our, um, project at the, uh, bulkhead, uh, at the dock is, uh, 98% finished and, um, we are, um, hoping that if everything goes correctly, his, uh, his crews don't come down with coronavirus and have to stop working. Um, if nothing, uh, like that happens and they continue, uh, working the way they are, uh, we should be, um, open, uh, and ready for, uh, the boat season. So we're in very good shape there. Uh, we opened up the golf course on, uh, April, um, uh, April 1st, uh, according to the executive orders, uh, from the governor and on the 9th of, um, April, uh, the executive order came to close all golf courses and we did close the golf course and now, uh, we'll talk about it later in the meeting, but, um, now the executive order is a golf course can now, um, be opened again for walkers only. So, uh, we will talk about that and make that decision, uh, later in the meeting. Um, I think I covered pretty much, John, is there anything else that I missed that, uh, we should go over with residents?
Uh, no, Mayor Fell, I think we, we have a little bit more to report on la- latter part of the meeting.
Okay.
As, as, as long as we're hitting highlights there, Mayor, maybe we want to talk about the, um, marinas.
Yeah, um, marinas are, um, you, uh, marinas can be, uh, open now for recreational, uh, vehicles, uh, not vehicles, recreational, uh, vessels and also our, um, when our marina is open, the dock is open, the, uh, um, the boat launch will be open and that can be used by, uh, residents. So, um, that has been a change and they, that change came through, uh, early, uh, this weekend. And, uh, so when our marina is finished, uh, we will be, uh, ready to, um, for the residents who have slips, uh, uh, at the dock to, uh, put their boats in. So, uh, is there anything I forgot, David, that you can think of?
No, it's, that seems to be it.
Okay, um, very good. Uh, I need a resolution. Uh, Joe, do you have anything you want to report?
Yes, uh, a follow-up to a previous comment by trustees and yourself, Mayor. Last week, uh, Friday, uh, the mayor had a conference, uh, call and, uh, there were two going on at the same time and he asked me to participate in one of them. And the one that I participated in was with all the, uh, mayors of Suffolk County, uh, and one of the concerns that, uh, everyone basically had, if there was a way to wait, uh, to try and help our taxpayers to delay, uh, their tax payment. And it was made very clear, uh, by the, uh, attorneys that were representing, uh, the county and the town and everything was involved, that in fact, that can only happen through the governor. No municipality can arbitrarily go out and change that. Um, so there's, there's that, those wheels are turning. Um, and, um, you know, obviously, you know, we've talked about it. There's something more we can do, uh, to help out our, uh, taxpayers, uh, in some particular way. And the other part that was basically given by everyone was that there's a lot of avenues out there the taxpayers can reach out to, uh, collectively, individually to assist them if they're not able to, uh, pay their taxes. But there was no relief by, uh, um, any attorneys or anyone. It is governor decision solely, uh, regarding that. So that was pretty interesting to hear and there was a great deal of unanimity by, um, all the ma- all the mayors that were involved. The other part, um, to, uh, dialogue about a little bit, and then we can get into it, uh, layer, later, Mr. Mayor, was the fact that, um, yes, I feel very good that we were able to, uh, reduce one of our challenges by almost $30,000 and at the same time, I don't want anybody to think that I've given up on that. Steve Mackin and I have been talking quite a bit about what else we could do to try and, uh, relieve some of the bills that we have, but we've already, you know, moved forward in regard to it. The other part is, um, there, what I learned from that meeting and speaking with other mayors, there, there's at least 11 different programs out there to help, uh, residents and, and business people in many ways to be able to get funding, um, fun from the federal government, but you know the struggle that's going on there. Lastly, uh, the big concern that I have is the one I've been, um, bringing up all the time. I'm concerned about the distancing that we're trying to work on as it affects everything and the idea that we have a marina that's coming into play very soon. Keep in mind that one of the reasons we're able to get a lot of the funding that we do, that John and everyone puts together, our marina also has three very important vessels that dock there. One, Suffolk County Police, that's, that's very important. Number two, our fire department and three, our ambulance. It was just this past weekend that there was a person that drowned in the water and, and you know, it just continues to support and perpetuate the fact that we are doing things constantly. They might not always be in the scene, uh, for everyone to see, but the wheels are constantly turning, constantly turning in regard to it. The last one I'm going to bring up is I'm delighted that we've been talking also, uh, with the, um, South Country School District, which the mayor will touch on that. And keep in mind that we have many locations that are helping to assist people with food. We have a local pantry right here at Mary Immaculate and they've been putting out in excess of 130, uh, 130 meals, uh, per week. So there's a lot of people that are helping out and we're lucky that we have so many people that are stepping up to the plate in the village of Belleport. That's it, Mr. Mayor, for my report.
Great, thank you, Joe. Um, I need a, uh, resolution to approve the following payments. General Fund Checking Abstract Report, number 10, uh, 65 vendors, uh, the general fund expenditure is $95,598.84 and the Enterprise Fund Expenditure is $7,411.60. That's a total of $103,010.44. Uh, also, um, uh, approve the Enterprise Fund Checking Abstract, number 10, 15 vendors totaling, totaling $81,248.18 and approve the Capital Fund Checking Abstract Report, number 10, two vendors totaling $603,120.25. Uh, I need a motion for those, uh, for A, B, C, A, B and C, motion?
So made.
Uh, Steve Mackin, second?
Second.
Uh, Joe Gagliano, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, resolution to allow the treasurer to make the necessary budget transfer, uh, transfers as listed in Exhibit, Exhibit Three, motion?
So move.
Um, Steve Mackin, second?
So.
Uh, Bob Rosenberg, a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, motion carries. Uh, now, uh, we, uh, are going to, uh, the, at our last meeting, uh, last week, we did the, um, uh, public hearing on the tentative budget and then we decided, uh, last Monday to wait and not vote on that budget, uh, give people a week, um, to again, uh, send in, uh, questions. Uh, I think what we'll do is we'll go over the questions that we were, uh, given, um, at last Monday's meeting. Um, Susan Beckett, uh, sent, uh, questions in and basically her questions were, um, uh, a little more background involved in, um, using the appropriated unrestricted, um, fund balance and that is the, uh, what's, what she's talking about is the, uh, $93,600, uh, $600. And Ally, do you want to go over that?
Sure. So that is the amount that, of the ban payment that we'll have to make. That's the principal portion on the FEMA municipal dock project. So we are submitting to FEMA for reimbursement for those expenses. So once that reimbursement comes in, that will be used to pay down the ban. If we don't receive that reimbursement before the ban principal payment is due, we're going to use fund balance, uh, in order to fund that, uh, until that reimbursement comes in. And then once the reimbursement is received, the fund balance will be replenished.
Right, we will need to make that decision of whether, um, um, if we have not gotten any FEMA money, uh, at that point, it's in February sometimes. Is that correct, Ally?
Right.
Yeah. So if, if by February, uh, the middle of February, we don't have any, uh, money from FEMA in yet, then we'll take that out of our, uh, unrestricted fund balance and then, um, uh, repay that to the unrestricted fund balance once we get the, so getting the money from FEMA. Um, her second question was the $46,794 that's appropriated fund balance restricted for debt service. Ally, would you go over that?
Sure, that's unspent broke, uh, bond proceeds from the 2016 bond. So any unspent bond proceeds are required, they were required to be spent on debt service. Uh, so we've had that restricted balance on the books for a couple of years. So we're including that in the budget this year in order to remove that restriction. And at some point that would have to be done, uh, in order to get rid of that restriction.
So we're going to use that, um, that, uh, bond money, uh, from 2016 to pay some sort of either principal or interest on one of our bonds, um, for this year. Is that correct, Ally?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Um, then, um, the, uh, other question she had was, uh, the, um, $824,257. That's our estimated, uh, fund balance, which will be at the end of this fiscal year. So that's, um, what we, uh, uh, what we will have. And then the last piece is the estimated general fund balance appropriated by the board. That's the 140,0394. Now, if you look and take the $93,000 that our treasurer talked about and, uh, uh, from, um, money that will, we will pay for the, um, um,
Ban.
Ban that we have. Um, and then the 93, the $46,700, uh, 794 from the debt service, um, that we're appropriating, that adds up to the $140,394 and that's the estimated general fund balance appropriated by the board. Uh, and again, uh, we definitely will spend the $46,794. The $93,600 we may not have to use if we, uh, get money from FEMA. So any board members have questions about that?
Not at all.
So that was the, that was the questions that, um, um, Susan Beckett, uh, uh, submitted and we went over those again, we went over those last Monday night. Uh, Greg Thorverson sent some questions in and, um, he, uh, agreed that the, that any budget, uh, and revenue, um, are, uh, suspect during these difficult times, um, and maintain a tight rein is important. He agrees to, he agrees with that. And, uh, we raised, in this budget, we raised, uh, ferry fees both for resident and non-residents. And also, um, next year, uh, we increased the, um, $2, we increased $2 a foot for dockage, um, in, uh, our marina. So it went from a $63 a foot to, it'll go from 63 to 65 and that will happen, uh, in next year's budget. And also, um, we had talked about during our budget meetings, uh, $50 for sticker for Ho-Hum Beach Dockage for both, um, uh, uh, slip owners and, uh, residents who don't have boats in our marina, uh, they would get a sticker for $50. So, um, at that point, um, the, the, um, uh, board is going to discuss this further at, uh, the February board meeting, uh, I'm sorry, November board meeting when we set, um, our, um, prices for, uh, our fees for the marina. Uh, any questions in that, board members? Everyone understands that.
Once again, what with, what I understand the board is saying to our residents is Ho-Hum is costing the village $90,000 a year. We don't make any money over there. We don't make $5,000 a year on the concession statement and we have these expenses and we're trying to come up with an equitable way so that some of the expenses are paid by the users. That's all.
Great, thank you, Mike. Uh, and then after our budget meeting, uh, last Monday night, uh, we received, uh, some questions from Rob and Row and I'll just have, um, Ally, um, our first question, what is the change from last year's total appropriations? Uh, Ally, could you go over that?
Sure. The total appropriations in the current year's tentative budget is $4,790,623 and the total general fund appropriations in the 1920 budget was $4,478,031. So that's an increase of $312,592. Um, and that's being funded partially by property taxes as well as user fees and grant for persons.
Okay, so, um, uh, this new budget is a 2.7% tax increase and, uh, that would be a $60, uh, a year, uh, tax increase for the house that's, um, associated, the, uh, house that is, um, that is assessed, um, the average house assessment, uh, in the village. Um, is that correct, Ally?
That's correct.
Uh, the other question was, um, that she noticed that we have hourly rates, um, in several cases on a budget of $12 an hour and she's questioning the, um, uh, she was questioning the minimum, uh, wage in the state is, I think, uh, this year it's going to be $15. Um, municipalities are not, um, not subject to, um, the state, um, minimum wage. They're subject to the, um, federal minimum wage and the $12 an hour is the federal minimum wage and we only use that in certain areas. We use it, uh, at, uh, the dock hand, the dock, the deckhands on the ferry, uh, the, um, the deckhand, uh, the deckhands over at, um, um, Ho-Hum and the bag boys at the golf course. Uh, so those three areas we had, we used, uh, the 12, we used the $12, uh, an hour rate. Everywhere else, we use the, uh, minimum wage of, uh, at least $15 an hour. So those are the answers to, um, um, Rob and Rose's questions. I did call her and go over that with her on the phone. So she is aware of that and I told her we would also, uh, review it in the meeting. Uh, those are all the questions that we, uh, received. Uh, so at this point, uh, I need a, a motion to, um, uh, approve the, the budget, uh, for 2021. Uh, motion?
So move.
Uh, Bob Rosenberg, second?
Second.
Steve Mackin, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, um, a lot of work went into this, Ally, uh, especially from you, uh, from December when we started working on it till, uh, till, until tonight. So, uh, Ally, uh, on behalf of all the board members and residents of, uh, Belleport Village, uh, we appreciate the work that you, um, uh, put in to, uh, review the budget and go over it. Uh, because I know when we first started in December, we had a 20% tax increase and, um, thank you for all of your hard work, uh, to look into how we could best, um, move forward with the budget and, um, you were able to help get it down to a 2.7% tax increase. So Ally, thank you so much and the board is very appreciative, appreciative of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you, Ally.
Thanks, Ally.
Okay, um, now, uh, John, we did, um, uh, talk about at the last meeting, uh, the, um, uh, increases in the, um, adjustments for the main dock project. John, you, would you, uh, go over that with us?
Yes, Mayor Fell. Um, as we discussed during our work session, our last work session, there are three items, um, that are rather new to the contract. Um, much of it will be under the contingency within the bid with our contractor. First on the list is the de-watering slash pumping. Um, as you know, our main pier is, uh, in the middle of the bay. Um, it's necessary to de-water, uh, for all the subterranean work. Um, that amount will be $240,000. Second is the soil removal. During excavation, our contractor noticed that the soil was not suitable. The drainage, uh, wasn't suitable for, um, the regrading. So not only did he have to bring in sand to, to, um, the soil that we removed, but then he also had to, um, dispose of the soil that we did not use. So that amount is $28,000. As I said, our contingency within our contract, under the FEMA contract, uh, should take care of most of those two, uh, the, uh, some of those two items. Lastly is the West Bulkhead Extension. Uh, the, there is an extension of 20 feet, um, for a, an additional $16,000. Um, and it's well warranted because as you know, the, uh, tides, the rising, um, sea level of our bay. Um, and it's well warranted because as you know, the, uh, tides, the rising, um, sea level of our bay uh, has actually, um, destroyed, uh, some of our parking lot in the past. So this addition on the west side going north is going to help improve the situation with the rising tides. We noticed even today that our, oh, and it's rather low tide when I was there this morning for our meeting, that at the gazebo, uh, the water was ju- just ebbing below where the gazebo is. So we've, we've lost a significant amount of beach there.
Okay.
Excuse me. Wait, wait, Ray, I gotta ask something. Um, what number are we up to on the agenda?
Five.
Five.
What, five?
Yes.
Yes.
Chinko.
I'd sent out, uh, the final, the final agenda went out today, uh, that included these two items. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we discussed them in our work session. I, I'd sent out the revised agenda, uh, earlier today. So, uh, Joe, if you're looking at the original drafted agenda, that these, this topic was not listed.
Okay, I, okay, that's fine. I got it now. Okay, cause I had moved the other agenda around. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Um, any board members have any, uh, any additional questions about the, uh, uh, three items?
I'm just very pleased with what's going on, Ray. I, I think we're very fortunate to have this cons- this contractor doing the work he's doing. And he's giving us ideas, making it work even better. The sixteen thousand dollars is something even our engineer didn't consider. And he, it's just, it's the right way to go.
He's, uh, you know, uh, when we, when the bids first came in and he was the little bidder, um, uh, the, um, we went out and asked for, um, recommendations from people that he had worked for, municipalities that he'd worked for before, and, uh, every one of them had nothing but great things to say about it. And he, uh, he is a wonderful contractor, and we, I think we're fortunate to have him, uh, win the, uh, the bid. So that's great. Any other questions about the three, uh, the three, um, uh, uh, adjustments to the project? Okay, I need a motion to approve the, uh, three project, the three adjustments.
Motion.
Mike, second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, Bob Rosenberg, uh, this, a further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, updates, uh, status, uh, status of village elections, uh, in June, June sixteenth. We will have elections for, uh, two trustees, uh, to serve two-year terms and one village judge to serve a four-year term. Um, the latest on elections, I wish I had, um, more information for you, but at this point, um, some villages, uh, have their elections in March. Some villages, uh, like us, uh, they have their, uh, elections in June. Um, the March elections were canceled and rescheduled to April. Uh, those elections in April have been canceled and also rescheduled for June. So, um, as of right now, our election, our election, uh, will, uh, be June sixteenth, uh, two thousand twenty, and, uh, we will also, the, uh, villages that were electing, uh, their trustees, uh, in March will also join the June elections. Um, as of right now, petitions, um, have been, um, uh, stopped. Uh, there is no, uh, you cannot go around and get petitions signed at this point. The, uh, uh, executive order from the governor has, uh, stopped, uh, the circulation of petitions. The March elections, those villages that had elections in March, they are fortunate because their petitions were already done. Um, and their ballots are already set. So, um, uh, they, they will not, uh, not, not have to go through that again. We will have to, in some way, um, get, um, those people who would like to run for the, a trustee and, uh, anyone who wants to run, run for the village justice, they're going to have to get petitions, um, signed. How that's gonna happen, um, I have no idea. The state is, uh, continuing to, uh, look into that and will, uh, give us, um, uh, some, uh, thoughts, uh, some, uh, direction at a later date. Also, voting, um, they're not sure that people will be able to come to the polls, um, by June to vote. So either they'll, uh, postpone the elections to further, uh, you know, in the summer, or they'll come up with a different way of, uh, voting for, um, the, um, a different, uh, the trust, the just trustees and the, and the village, uh, uh, justice. How, um, they have not, uh, shared with us yet, but they said, um, that will, over the next probably three weeks or so, they will, uh, they will make, uh, decisions on exactly how they're going to do that. Um, any questions from board members about that, uh, especially Steve and, and, um, uh, Joe, because you're running. Um, as of right now, you can't get petitions, uh, uh, bring them around to get signed. So we'll just have to wait until we get the direction from the state on how to do that, and then we'll share it with the whole community. And, uh, anyone else who is going to run for, uh, either trustee or village justice, uh, will have to follow the, the guidelines that, uh, are set. But as of right now, petitions, we have no guidelines, um, and, uh, voting. We're assuming voting is going to happen traditionally the way it happens, but we're not positive. They're looking at, um, other ways to, uh, have people cast ballots.
Mayor Fell?
Yes.
Since, since we were told that we could not get voting machines this time, and we were going to have a paper ballot. I'm wondering whether or not it's within our province to say anyone who wanted could get an absentee ballot.
Uh, that's one of the things they were talking about, uh, they were talking about doing that. Or, uh, they were talking about just mailing the ballot to every resident, and they would, uh, they would, um, mail it, mail it back in. Uh, uh, and that would be the vote, but they haven't decided, uh, they're, they're just, um, talking about a lot of different ways to do it. Uh, so I don't know exactly how they'll do it yet, but, uh, we're just waiting for further guidance.
Great.
Uh, just so, just so the board's aware, absentee ballots are always an option.
Right. Okay, any other questions about the upcoming election?
Glad to hear you're both running.
Uh, maybe, John, maybe you and I, uh, can spend some time tomorrow and just put, um, uh, some, um, you know, uh, upcoming election, um, you know, uh, some guidance, uh, to, uh, to the community about, uh, you know, how the upcoming election will, uh, will, what, what it will look like at this point. So maybe we'll come together and do something.
Yes, Mayor Fell.
Okay, um, Bellport Dock, um, FEMA Dock Project, John, you wanna bring us up to date? Mike, you, uh, you and John wanna bring us up to date?
John knows the most that I do.
Okay.
Yes, um, my, uh, Mike Farino is liaison, and I have been working diligently on the project since it began. Um, it's moving ahead, uh, very well under the circumstances because, you know, we do have the pandemic crisis. Thank goodness the crews are healthy. We know that in a moment that could change. But, uh, they are healthy and they are making progress, not as, not as, uh, as they had, would have liked under, you know, if there were normal circumstances. But considering, as Mayor Fell mentioned earlier, ninety-eight percent of the bulkhead is complete. You can see on our website the progress. I'll be adding some photos that I took today. We have our weekly morning, uh, morning, Monday morning meetings. Uh, that went very well likewise. Uh, there were, um, s- some times of concern during the project where supply houses were closing. So it was difficult, uh, to, um, garner supplies, but, but that is changing, so we're in good shape there. Uh, currently, they're working on the stormwater drain. Um, portion of the project likewise, the electrical. This week, they're also going to be putting in, um, the, the new water system. Um, and after that, um, we have the hydrodynamic separator, which is for the water purification. That, um, system will take the waters that come down Bellport Lane and the waters that, um, that, um, uh, from rains on our dock itself. Uh, and, uh, through that hydrodynamic separator, it's like a centrifuge, so the impurities, um, should be separated. Um, again, this, this system of water purification is really for the first flush because that's when, where most of the toxins are. Um, and, uh, once that, those toxins are separated, they'll, they'll, uh, the waters that, um, positive conveyance of waters will go into the bay. Um, once the stormwater drain system, water purification and the electrical is complete, they will begin the final grading. Um, we know that we, we are postponing the final resurface coat. Um, the substrate will be there all summer to, to, um, settle uh, so that when we do the final, um, in the fall, uh, it'll, it'll just prove to be, uh, more beneficial for us after the, the, um, the ground, the earth is settled. So that'll happen after the season.
John, excuse me, would you make it clear to everyone that when you say the substrate, it's going to be asphalt. There's going to be a coating there that'll be asphalt. It's not like it's going to be stones, raw stones.
Yes, um, that's my understanding. Thank you for clarifying that. Uh, this, it's not unusual to wait, uh, for it to be settled. And it's my understanding, as, as Trustee Farino is mentioning, that there will be a layer of asphalt. It will just not be the final layer.
Okay, but let me, let me just jump in for a second. Okay, Mike had a good point. Okay. What you have, before you put down the final mercatum and everything, you go to what's called, uh, RCA blend, okay? Which is recycled con- concrete, et cetera, like that. And, uh, uh, the good news is a lot of what's being used now, uh, down at the marina, the biggest challenge we have is the settlement situation. It's not like, you know, the marina's being done, you know, up on Main Street or something like that. We all know it's actually being built and done on water, uh, quite a few feet down. The other part is you always wanna get as much settlement as you can before you bring in the mercatum. And yes, there will be some initial coats, but we have to make that clear to the residents and the people so they don't get misled. That's why I thought it was good what Mike said, because they'll be thinking that that's the final product, and in fact, it's not. It's actually three more after that that is, is the final. And, um, the final, when you see it, there's another part. Not only aesthetically do you want it to look good, there's another part. Yeah, you know, we bring in a lot of boats with trails and everything, and some of those boats do carry a certain amount of weight. So not only do you want it to look aesthetically good, you wanna be sure that once we come in with the stuff on a very hot day, like in, you know, August, that we're not gonna be sinking in to what we're doing. So it is advantageous for our village that we don't rush that final situation. That's all. I, I, I just wanna further emphasize what Mike was saying, and it, and it's, and it's an important one. And nowadays, unlike the days of old, um, the, the tamping that goes on in our rolling is done by a machine that's pneumatic, so it's vibrating as well when it's trying to get everything to settle in. So it's real good, and, uh, it's gonna be a positive outcome. I'm done.
Thanks, Joe. So that, uh, I'm glad you said that, Joe, cause I thought, uh, I thought it was just that an RCA blend and it would be left that way for the, uh, uh, for the, uh, summer, but there'll be a thin coat of, um, of, of blacktop on there, which is, uh, much better. So that's great. Um.
Just Ray, everybody's gotta be on board, Ray, because people are gonna walk up to us as trustees and say, gee, you know, what's going on down there when they see, uh, a, a little bit of asphalt going down? So just that we all stay on the same page, that's all.
Right. But I'm glad, no, I'm glad you said that because I was under the impression that it was just going to be, the RCA blend would be, uh, um, the final coat for the summer, but, uh, that thin coat of, of asphalt that will be down there, that'll be much better. Um, uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll have to mark parking lot, uh, you know, parking spaces, and so that'll, that'll be great.
The final determination, Mr. Mayor, is really gonna come by mother nature, okay?
Right.
That if they're able to put it down, I mean, we know we've had real good temperatures. The other thing, though, that's very involved is, you know, you want the rain because it helps the settle. But yes, if you're having the heavy raids or anything, you cannot put down a mercatum. So
Right.
Everybody be patient.
Good. Thanks, Joe. Uh, John, anything else?
Uh, not regarding the dock project.
Great. Um, okay, we did put out for bid the, um, uh, four projects that we were looking to do. Osborne Park, repair of the, uh, uh, main dock at the end, the, uh, uh, end of Brown's Lane, and the replacement of the ferry dock. John, you wanna go over that?
Yes, Mayor Fell. Um, these four projects, uh, do not fall under the FEMA contract. They are areas, uh, that need, do need attention. Um, and as Mayor Fell had said, uh, there's the Osborne Park Dock and the rowboat, uh, Beach Bulkhead. Uh, likewise, uh, the blowout at the Rock Dock, the end of Brown's Lane, and, uh, the replacement of the ferry dock. We had four contractors respond, uh, Brant Marine, DRG Construction, Mechanical and Marine Construction, and Terry Contracting. At our next work session, we'll be looking at those, um, those bids in more detail uh, and discussing strategies to move forward.
Okay, uh, do board members have any, uh, uh, any, uh, comments about the, uh, the, um, bids?
I think it's better to look at it at the work session, get more.
Agreed.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. So we'll, um, we'll take a look at it at the work session. We'll have some, uh, further, uh, information, and then we can, um, discuss it further.
Mr. Mayor, I would like that we, uh, don't walk away. I understand what you're saying, John, regarding these are not under the guise of our FEMA project. But one of the things in light of what is going on presently with the, uh, virus, if ever there's a time, uh, if you speak with, uh, Mr. Mandell and others, okay? And I know you've really given, you know, a lot of time into this already. If there's a possibility that there's any door that's open and we could revisit any of this to get supportive funding, um, uh, from FEMA regarding any of those projects. And, uh, the other part connected with it is obviously that, um, uh, a- a- as we know, when we keep bringing out the fact that we have, um, you know, the police boat, the ambulance and a fire boat there, something that Trustee Mackin knows, he deals with these agencies all the time, uh, with, with, with his, uh, company, okay? Federal, state, local, et cetera. It's so important that we don't think ever that the door is shut. These are different times, and, and, and John, I'm, I know you stay on top of it, but let's keep, keep a close eye in regard to it, and certainly stay in touch with Mr. Mandell, our liaison, okay?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Gaglio. Thank you, yes.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Bellport Golf Course exist, um, the, uh, it's been a roller coaster for golfers, uh, golf courses, uh, in New York State. On April, um, uh, uh, April first, uh, we opened up our golf course and the executive order said that golf courses could be open. Uh, on April ninth, the executive order came out to close golf courses and on, and on, um, April seventeenth, um, it came out that golf courses, uh, could be open. Um, and, um, the security, uh, uh, could be provided by, uh, employees um, and will have that at our golf course with, uh, Jimmy Van Etch and, uh, John, um, uh, Mackey and Kyle Givens, and that, um, they can play, but, um, no golf carts, walking only. Um, there are, uh, there are, uh, uh, forty-seven golf courses, uh, in Suffolk County that have opened under those conditions, and I just wanted to be sure that, um, everyone, uh, the trustees were on board with, um, reopening our golf courses under the conditions of the, um, state, uh, executive order, which is, uh, no golf carts. Um, people come, and, uh, you've all seen the, the letter that, uh, the three-page, uh, procedures that Jimmy Van Etch and, uh, developed, and those will be, um, adhered to very strictly. And we will open up the course exactly the same as we have in the past, except no carts. walking only. So any board members have any any discussion on that?
Ray, before before we jump to the board members, I just want to state that at the mayor's request, I did do a diligent review of the executive orders to ensure that we would be in compliance with them had we decided, the board decided to open the golf course. I have reviewed the procedure set forth by our golf pro Jimmy Von Etchen. And I believe that if the board decides to open the golf course, that we will be in 100% compliance with the governor's orders.
Great, thank you, David. So that's where we are. So any board members have any questions about it?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, based on what the attorney, Dave Moran, just had said, absolutely support it.
Yeah, I I support it as well, but I do so on a short-term basis, if you will. I want to see very careful monitoring. I want to see 1,000% compliance with the governor's rules and social distancing. And I certainly will not hesitate to make a motion to close it if all the rules are not fully followed and there appears to be any danger whatsoever.
But, you know, Bob, the those those procedures that Jimmy Von Etchen developed and sent to all members. I just give you an example. On April 1st, two groups showed up at 7:30, and one of them, their tee time was nine o'clock, and the other, their tee time was 9:15. And they wanted to go out and hit some balls and practice putting, and Jimmy sent them home and said, go home, and you cannot be here. The nine o'clock group can come at 8:45, the 9:15 group can come at nine o'clock. So go home and come back. At that time, from April 1st to April 9th, it was closed. We he never had another problem about that. He was right around April 7th. He noticed that as people were coming off the last hole, they were starting to congregate a little bit, so there were like six guys in the there was a foursome and a twosome in the parking lot. And he just went out and said, that's it, out of here. It's golf and go. No one stays here to hang around and talk. So we haven't had that problem, and he will be very, very conscious of that as we move forward. They have developed, Chris Johnson, the superintendent, he developed a system where he turns, he's turned the cup upside down. So the ball hits and never goes to the bottom of the hole. So people's hands are not going to be in the hole picking out their golf ball. The golf ball is right on top. They pick it up, put it in their pocket. So they're the only one that touches the golf ball. No one touches the pin, the pin stays in. So the the time from April 1st to April 9th, it went very well, Bob, very smooth. But I do hear you, and I'll be the same, I will be in the same position you're in. If people are not social distancing, it's just like at Mother's Beach. If they don't, when the weather gets nice, if they don't social distance down there, we'll have to close it. And if they don't do that at the golf course, the golf course will have to be closed, absolutely.
I have, for the board's edification, I just want to let you know, I also provided my contact number as long as the as well as the deputy village attorney's contact number for any questions that he may have which fall in the gray as far as compliance goes. So there's open line of communication with council as well.
I have enormous confidence in Jimmy. I really do. But, you know, as things go on, sometimes people tend to get lax. I don't mean, I mean in general. And we've got to, we've got to be very careful and monitored.
You know, it's funny, Bob, I think, I mean, this is just me talking now. No one has, I have not had a conversation with any other golf pros or but I think we're going to be, I think we're going to be in this situation almost all summer, where, you know, no one is going to be allowed to, you know, be congregating in an area. I think it's going to be golf and go pretty much all summer. And they're talking right now, they're talking about beaches being open. Right now, beaches are not open, and when they open the beaches, they're talking about how they're going to social distance at a beach. So I don't know what is going to happen with beaches as we move forward. If if we're in the same condition that we're in right now, I can't see our, I can't see our ferry running. You know, you put 40 people on that ferry, they're, you know, shoulder to shoulder. There's no social distancing on the ferry. So I just don't know how we're going to move along as we get into the summer. I guess we'll see as we get closer to May 15th, when the governor will have to make a decision whether to begin to open up a little bit or, you know, keep keep it, keep things the way they are now for another another month. And so, you know, June 50th, I don't know that.
As as you correctly point out, Ray, we have a particular challenge beach-wise because of our ferry situation.
Right, right. I mean, I can see, I can see that the beach would be open, but the ferry not running. That could be a a situation. And if the beach is open, the lifeguards are going to have to take not only a major role in not only being sure that people are safe in the water, but they're going to have to be looking at social distancing. And, you know, if we're still doing that, you know, in the summer, to make sure people are not sitting right on top of each other at the beach. And we're fortunate at our beach, because there's a lot of, especially during the week, there's a lot of room to spread out. So we'll see where that goes, but the time will tell. They are, the county said, the county has indicated at a meeting I had with them today that over the next two weeks, they're going to put together regulations and procedures for beaches. So we'll see, we'll see what what happens when that, when they come out.
Yeah, I think that we we have to also mention the fact that we've had extraordinary support and cooperation from all the membership also, that they've been very patient, very cooperative. And as the governors made it very clear, once we get to the opening of a marina, the distancing thing must be followed. And, you know, they they've made it very clear that the distance procedure is one of the biggest things that they feel has helped retard the virus. And of course, what they say regarding the mask, and it's interesting lately, they're backing off of the glove situation. The leadership, I don't mean politically, I'm talking about medically. That's pretty interesting, but they do feel that the distance is making a big impact. And I just, I just think it's good that we have a community that's being very cooperative on all those things. And maybe that's the reason that, thank God, our numbers aren't so bad. And that's all I got.
Yeah, I think it's it's interesting. You know, I don't follow it that closely, but I know out in some of the states, they're having protests about social distancing and not being able to do things. So I guess there's a point where people feel enough is enough. But hopefully, you know, especially in an area like Long Island, Suffolk County, where there's so much congestion as far as the number of people, that we have to be very careful on on how we socially interact with each other for at least the next couple of months. I know my, I've talked to some people who've said that this thing will won't be really over until they get a vaccine. So and that could be a year, a year away. So I hope that's not true, and I hope that we can begin to get back to a little bit of normalcy over the next couple of months. So I will tell, I will let Jimmy know tomorrow morning that they can open the golf course, and we'll move forward. And I thank you for your support. But Bob, your comments are very well taken, and I'll let, you know, Jimmy is aware, but I will, when I talk to him tomorrow morning, I will let him know that the board is very supportive of opening the golf course. But we just have to make sure that we don't get lax, and we begin to let people form, you know, groups, and they're hanging out at the golf course in the parking lot. And so we will, we will monitor that very carefully, Bob. Thank you. Okay. Status, John, status of the enterprise fund questions that Mike and Bob had asked.
Yes, yes, Mayor Fell. We have made a great headway. I've received final drafts from Ally, our treasurer, likewise you, Mayor Fell, and our attorney, and deputy attorneys. So that I'll now, I'll be able to put them all together. We're hoping that our audit firm, ABC, Albrecht Vigiano, will will also review our partner that with the firm that we have is Tom Ruggero, so he'll receive that tomorrow. And hopefully, we'll be able to review together at our work session, our upcoming work session in May.
Great. I apologize to both you, Bob, and Mike. A lot of that, most of that was my fault. I stopped checking on where we were with it. There was just so much else going on, and it just got away from us. But I think we're all set, we should be ready at the at the May's work session.
There have been a few other things going on.
Yeah, so, but we, thank you for reminding us, Bob and Mike, because I had, it had really gone to way back in my mind, and I hadn't really thought about it since we started these other things. So we'll, we'll move forward. I think we're in a good position now, and we'll have everything done and ready for the May work session. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have a topic I'd like to discuss. There's been concern about kids camp. As we've mentioned about other amenities within our community, we we just really are waiting and to see how this pandemic crisis evolves. Certainly, we we hope and we intend to run kids camp. But however, at this moment, it doesn't make sense for us to begin the registration process. Ordinarily, it started by now. But we just really need to see how how we progress before we take in payments, etc. I know many families are anxious to join up and register, but we just don't think it's prudent. And I just wanted to make the board aware that we have not begun the registration process now. We can also further discuss the matter at our May meeting, our work session.
John, have you discussed this sort of holdback with the Sailing Foundation? They are, at this time, usually getting the individuals who sail for the summer.
Yes, that's correct. They have begun their registration process early in March. So they do have registrants, and they've been communicating with me as to the status of the marina itself. So they also understand that they're on hold depending on the crisis. But they did begin their registration, so they do have registrants. And, you know, as for kids camp and the Sailing Foundation, we hope that we are able to progress. Sailing Foundation doesn't begin until the end of the end of June, beginning of July, likewise with kids camp. So we're hoping that we will have the summer season for the camps. But it's really too soon to tell.
Mike, have you had dialogue with them?
My understanding is they did not register anyone yet.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, I spoke. I didn't hear what you, what you said, Mike. Have you had dialogue with them?
My understanding from them is that they have not registered anyone as yet.
Typically, though, typically at this time of the year, do they register people?
Yes.
Okay.
John, correct? It's usually done by now.
Yes, they began in early March, and they do have registrants. I don't know, you know, to what extent, but John Pecorni, who runs the program with this, you know, Bellport Bay Sailing Foundation, you know, he was asking questions regarding mobilizing. So we'd said, you know, certainly the the marina is moving along nicely. So we don't really believe that project will impact mobilization. However, the, you know, the pandemic, it's very hard to forecast, so.
John, have you had a conversation with Mr. Pecorni about the equipment they have stored under the yacht club building? They were given the authorization to build a facility on the west side, that piece of property that they are renting, so that the students, for the opties particularly, would not be carrying those sails across the parking lot? Do you know if that's progressing?
Well, yes, you're correct. We haven't, we haven't really broached, you know, moving forward with, you know, a storage area specifically, because, you know, they'll have to explain to us what their intentions are and, you know, basically give us a diagram for our approval. They do know that that is something we're very interested in, but they have not moved forward yet. I did speak to John Pecorni last week, again, specifically about mobilization. And he agreed that it's very hard to very hard to assess at this point what's going to happen in, you know, two months from now.
When you think, John, when you think back to former summers, one of the most difficult jobs for the dock guards is to expedite the parents going around the dock, dropping off their children. And the traveling back and forth with those sails becomes a problem. If that could all be moved over, so it's on either the pad or the beach or wherever, it would make it a lot easier, particularly this summer, when the surface is not going to be the finished surface.
Right, yeah, I, we will be pursuing that, and we can discuss it further at our work session.
Great, very good.
That'll be a good topic for our work session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, John, also keep in mind, if there's anything I can do with the point, to Howells' point, to support them, okay? I'd be more than happy to do it. I think their program is just so beneficial for safety, sailing, and everything that's involved. If there's any way they need the point, tell them, consider it not a question, okay?
That's excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Gagliano. Yeah, I agree with you that it is one of the the highlights of our summer season. And very pleased that we're able to work with them and accommodate. I do know they do have registrants for their season. However, we do not with kids camp, because our registration starts later.
And Mike, obviously, I'm not looking at to have you involved. You know people too, Mike. Anything I can do with the point to help them, I'm happy to do it, Mike.
Great, Joey. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, John?
No, Mayor Fell, I do know that we are interested in executive session.
Right, so I need a motion to go into executive session?
So both.
Bob, second?
Second.
Steve Mackin, discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. So now, how are we going to do this, John? You're going to click off, and then we're going to call back in?
Yes, Mayor Fell, as I I wrote, we're going to end our Zoom meeting. I've heard back from my staff that we are successful in live streaming. We, I just appreciate everybody's patience in that endeavor. So this is our first virtual meeting live on YouTube. So now I'm going to, we're going to sign off here, and I'm going to set up our telephonic meeting for the executive session. Thank you again.
Great, thanks, John. Thanks, John, good job, thank you.
Thank you.